Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing no one else recording this meeting, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We have no citizens here to comment. Once again, special recognitions. I don't see anything under that category. Mr. Hanfield, anything last minute?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. And do we have student representatives?
Jasmine just popped in.
Just checking on our student representatives.
Hi Jasmine, there she is.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
There she is.
Good, thank you.
Are you ready to report Jasmine?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Um, so I guess I'll just get started right away so I don't waste any time. Um, things have been going really, really well, especially coming back from break. I think it really helped, um, I think it was really needed. Um, I want to say that with the iPads, I know previously I had mentioned that with the photos, a lot of photos were blocked so that we couldn't see them. And I spoke to Mr. Bouvier to fix that. And I just checked on it and it seems like everything is back to normal. So we can see all the photos we need for projects and whatnot, so that's really great. Um, so I appreciate that getting taken care of because it makes everything a lot easier and more accessible. Um, other than that, as for COVID guidelines, things I felt like kind of started falling behind with people following signs and stuff like that. But teachers have been becoming more strict with maintaining that. So people are starting to get back into the swing of things, I feel, with just doing what they can to maintain the regulations and everything that's been put in place. So that's also really good. And other than that, I didn't have much more to say tonight other than I think that students are still doing really well. And, um, you know, despite everything that's going on, I think that students are still doing their best and trying to remain motivated. And I think teachers are really doing their best to help with that.
Excellent. Well, thank you for advocating for your fellow students and having that photo situation taken care of. I'm sure they appreciate that. And I know what a pain that can be when you're trying to put projects together and you can't get the photos that you're looking for, so that was great. As-
Yes, of course.
As usual, you weren't afraid to come here with, um, with the negative stuff as well as you do the positive stuff. So that's, that's really great that you're not afraid to come in here and tell us, you know, what your needs are and what the needs of your fellow students are. We really appreciate that. And speaking of-
Of course.
Speaking of your fellow students, um, do you know if Aaron's gonna be joining us tonight?
I'm not sure. Um, he hadn't said anything to me. I know that he was at our NHS meeting earlier, but I haven't spoken to him, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, maybe if he, um, if he pops in later, we'll, we'll just stop what we're doing and let Aaron say a few words. Does anyone have anything for Jasmine? No, I don't think there are any comments or questions for you. Jasmine, thank, thank you as always.
Of course, thank you.
Have a nice evening and we'll see you next time.
You as well, I'll see you in the next meeting.
Thank you.
Bye Jasmine, take care.
Bye.
All right, welcome Gail.
Thank you.
And I would now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 2:321.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone watching at home and who will be watching this a little bit later. As we always start off our meetings with COVID update, we continue to see a decrease in COVID cases in the district, which is, is great. Uh, we, to this point, since returning from vacation, we haven't, we've reported three. But those three cases were towards the, the beginning of the vacation week. So, um, you know, good news on that front. So we're happy with how that's going. During the vacation weeks, people may have heard through the local updates with, with the governor and, and whatnot, that the town will no longer be receiving vaccinations with the exception of, you know, people that are homebound and have real serious issues getting to a vaccination site. So as you remember during our, our meeting of, I believe, the 18th, we talked about, um, or excuse me, not the 18th, prior to that, on the 3rd, we talked about, um, we were looking to bring a vaccination plan here onsite for, for faculty and staff. Unfortunately, you know, that's more than likely not gonna happen. And, um, you know, there's nothing that we can do about it. It's out of our control, it was a change at the state level. And so although our teachers are still in a priority order, they will be, um, they will be forced to go into the, you know, portal that everybody is utilizing now to seek out their, their vaccinations and, um, and go from there. So not necessarily, uh, not the news that we wanted at all, but, um, we, we will work with it, we, we don't have a choice. We are continuing to discuss, um, our current hybrid model with, with school personnel. I know that there's a lot of buzz right now based off of the governor and commissioner's press conference yesterday, where they are looking to accelerate student return in April. It's, it's really premature for me to comment on those plans right now because we don't really know what all the details are yet of the commissioner's plan. We did meet with him today as superintendent's and as an assistant superintendent's, but as he said yesterday, he still needs to go to the State Board of Education and receive the, um, the ability to do what he wants to do, which is essentially alter the current student learning time regulations to really start to move people back into school. So as we continue to, to work through that, we are continuing to work through that, you know, with, with school personnel here in, in Auburn. And, um, you know, when I do have something, you know, to share with the community of substance, I'll do that. Again, I know people are anxious around that, but, um, there's, there's a lot to this, this, uh, this situation. A lot of moving pieces. So, um, that's, um, that's really all I'm gonna say about that right now. And, um, you know, with respect to just kind of moving along, and I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if anybody has anything to comment on prior to moving on, or-
Dot, did you have something related to that?
Yes, I actually just have one question. So as we're, you can hear me, so as we're moving towards the possibility of getting kids back at school or more kids back at school, I think one thing, and I had raised this to Casey as well, I think if anything, this has given us a good chance to step back and look at some of the disparities between the type of attention that kids might get from their parents or their caregivers at home or might not get. So one thing that I had asked, and this is just for the sake of transparency, I had emailed Casey to say, to just ask if he and Beth can perhaps look at the homework situation as we roll back into school? Because I think it, if ever there were a time that we could look at making adjustments to the, to the load that goes home, I think now is a really appropriate time to do that because I, it seems like, you know, those are the kids that were having a marked issue with just completing some of their basic assignments in that remote model. So one would just naturally assume that that's also occurring, you know, for their after-school work. So if at all possible, if that could be looked at, I, it just from an, I, just from an equity perspective, how can we make it, you know, more workable? And that might be looking at what we traditionally had before, which was, um, after-school time assistance from some of the kid, from some of the teachers at the middle school and high school level. What if you don't have a ride, how are you gonna access that? Now that we've, you know, embraced Zoom, hopefully we can, you know, look at tweaking some of our models so that a larger net of children can be, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Through the chair, I, you know, I, I would agree, you know, with, with what you're saying. I believe Dr. Chamberlain would as well. I think one of the, the items, and there are several that will come out when I discuss my preliminary kind of entry plan findings, will be a discussion around this idea of equity and, and what that looks like. And certainly, um, children's access to adults is certainly gonna be part of that within, you know, within the Auburn Public Schools. So I think that's, that's a, I think what you raise is, is a, is a fine point. I also think too that it's going to potentially raise, I don't know if it will raise a review of our current homework policy. You know, we, we did look at homework about five years ago, I believe, as a district. And so that, that may necessitate a review of that policy too. But I think you raise a great point, and I think as we move through, you know, the month of March, you know, that will be something that will be definitely mentioned in, you know, in my entry findings. And I think also too, it's something that we can definitely probably address, you know, you know, in, in the next few days, you know, in terms of making sure that we're allowing that to happen.
Thank you.
I, I agree with, with Dot on that. And, and I know it's, it's probably outside of our purview to comment too much, and we totally appreciate what, what you put into all of this and what you're gonna put into the re-entry plan and what you put into the current homework guidelines. But yeah, I think, I, I think what a great time to, to start talking about it. And, um, you know, I, I know everyone does their best. Some, some teachers don't assign a whole lot of homework at all, and others, um, on the opposite end of the spectrum, assign probably what they think is a reasonable amount. But when you've got some students down here and you've got some students up here, it's really difficult to find what that reasonable amount is. So you might have, have someone sitting at the, at their desk after school for, for three or four hours and someone else wrapping that up in 15 minutes. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is to that as far as equity. But yeah, I think it's a great, great opportunity to, to take a look at it and, and make sure that the, and not to insult, um, teachers or, or administrators, but, you know, make sure the, the homework is meaningful and we're not just giving homework because that's, you know, that, that's what we're told we need to do. You need to assign this much homework each night and, um, you know, just, just make it meaningful. And again, not to insult anyone, I'm sure most, most teachers are assigning meaningful homework and they're assigning it in a fashion that they believe is not hurting students, you know, mentally, so.
Sure, and I, you know, if, and just, you know, there's, there's, um, you know, obviously this philosophical, you know, beliefs around, around homework. There's a boatload of research around the efficacy of homework and how much it, it actually impacts child's learning. It will be surprising, I think. I mean, when we get to that point where we have a more robust discussion about it, I think you'll be, you know, it's not what people will think. It's actually not, you know, drop the, you know, drop as much, you know, paper on kids as you can. It's, it's more about, you know, 15 to 20 minutes of, of, of high-end, you know, high-leverage, you know, work that reinforces what goes on in the classroom. And to your point, um, it's a great one, you know, there are kids that are all over the map. And so we wanna make sure that when we're, we are doing, you know, giving assignments and assigning homework, that it's an appropriate extension, you know, of, you know, of the curriculum. So, um, I, again, it's a, it's a very well-timed, um, topic and something that, you know, I'm sure, you know, we'll talk about a lot in the next, you know, few months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And regarding, um, regarding the return to school, should that happen, should that be forced on us by the Department of Ed in April sometime or whatever they're looking at? You know, just, I just want the, the teachers to understand that, you know, we do fail for them, especially those who, you know, are a little bit high-strung and a little bit concerned and stressed out. And, you know, everyone knows someone who's, who's fallen ill, seriously ill to COVID. And many of us know people or have relatives that have died due to COVID. So, so this is kind of a confusing message coming from the state. And, and I'm, and I'm not speaking as a teacher because as a teacher, I'm loving being in school every day. I've been there since September and, um, it, I love being there and I wanna go full-time and I want everyone back in the building. That's really what it's all about. But I do understand the concerns and I am a little bit concerned about the, the little bit that we have heard from the state. And I don't expect you to comment on that, Dr. Hanfield, about anything you learned in your meeting. I think, I think it's wise that, that you get all the facts before you even have a discussion. But I just wanna put it out there to our teachers. We, we, we do care as a committee. We are, we are concerned not only for your safety, but for your mental well-being. And I hope that this rolls out in a way that is different from the way the Department of Ed usually rolls things out, which is in a confusing and putting the cart before the horse kind of manner. I'm hoping that's not the case here. There's already talk of, you know, the, the priority being getting the, the youngsters into the buildings first. Well, you know, from a union standpoint, and I know nobody wants to hear "union", especially parents who want their children in school, but from a union standpoint, how do you send the youngsters to school while keeping the older children home in a hybrid model? It just doesn't work. So they've got a, they've got a lot of bases to cover here, and I just hope that they do it in an effective and thoughtful manner, that's all.
Yeah, and so, and, you know, through the chair, you know, I thank you for those comments. Yeah, I mean, I think Dr. Chamberlain and I concur as does, as do probably most of the, the superintendents and central office staff across the state, that the about-face on the vaccinations was a bit of a blind side. The, um, message yesterday regarding the return to school, I found out about it through the Wistia Telegram and Gazette at 11 o'clock from State House News Service. I received an email from the commissioner's office at quarter of one. Dr. Chamberlain received a message from her husband that this was happening, or the, that's how the plan was. And not that she doesn't mind talking to her husband, but that was a bit of a surprise to all of us. And, um, and so that becomes the difficulty in this, is that, you know, there's, there are a lot of bases to cover. From the podium, on TV, it's, it's made to be so simplistic and you're just gonna go back to school like that. And, you know, I appreciate people's frustrations. I actually, my brother and sister, as you know, both have children in the district and my brother more so than my sister. He and I had odds over this issue and have been since the beginning. So I, I absolutely appreciate all sides of this circumstance. But there are a lot of bases to cover. We do have to be mindful that, you know, there are things that need to be addressed and it starts with our school personnel. And what I don't want to have happen, and the reason why I'm not being a bit more forthcoming this evening is, is that I don't want our teachers or our other school personnel to feel the same way that Dr. Chamberlain and I felt the last two weeks on two separate occasions, you know, finding out things or hearing things in this format. I want to make sure that I, you know, we do our due diligence in speaking with, you know, our leadership, you know, throughout the district tomorrow, and then talk with our administrators. And then I, I plan on addressing the teaching corps and faculty and, you know, and staff and others on Friday. And we'll go from there. It, it's, we're kind of painted into a box a little bit. And so we're gonna just have to work together and, and make the best of it that we can. But I will say, to the, to everyone's credit, we were preparing to have a conversation tomorrow about a return to school long before yesterday's news broke. So I want everyone out there to know that, that the teachers, our faculty, our staff, you know, they were, they've been committed to what's right for our children. And we had a meeting tomorrow to sit down in good faith and start talking about what a reasonable return would look like. Seemingly now, again, it's premature to, to, you know, say anything definite, but seemingly now, based on the commissioner's comments, based on things that have happened, you know, with student learning time in, in the late fall, we're gonna kind of be, you know, told what, some things that we need to do. And we're not gonna have, you know, too many choices around that. So, um, once we get all that hashed out, you know, like I said, you know, that will be communicated. But I wanna make sure that the appropriate steps are taken and the right people are spoken to first before, you know, before anything is, is really made public.
Through the chair, I could look on at you.
I watched that news conference at home and the one thing that struck me more than anything, and he's saying how safe it is, but we have been keeping the kids six feet apart. If we bring them all back, we could have classes of like 28 put together. And I know our classrooms, you can't keep the kids even three feet apart in some of our classrooms. So I think that's a little, I don't know how that can, that can happen. I mean, I know the parents want the kids back. I know the kids would like to have, be back. I know the teachers would like to have them back. But in some of our classrooms, I don't know how we could possibly keep that safe distance. And, I mean, one of the things I used to do to make my room seem bigger is I put some of the desks together. And that gave more aisles in the room, but now you can't do that. So I, I, when I heard him say that, I'm like, I don't think it's gonna, it's not as easy as he's saying. Maybe it'll work somehow, but I just, it's just not snap your fingers and bring the kids all back and everyone's gonna be three feet apart and all's gonna be well.
And through the chair, kind of in aligning with what Gail has noted, I think it served us very well to go slowly when we started off in the beginning of the year. I feel like, you know, it, it came back in many returns. And I think even if we don't have the say-so of, you know, whether or not kids come back, we do have two months. But also, we can go slowly in terms of how the kids move around the school. Like, maybe the kids don't automatically switch classes. Maybe they still sit in their classrooms to eat lunch and we don't just go back. And I think that, that we just don't go back to all the kids in the cafeteria eating or, I mean, the feedback that I've gotten from the few teachers that, that had reached out to me was that it was just gonna go back to normal immediately. And that was too crowded, too chaotic. And I, but, so hopefully we do have some control where, or maybe we, you know, look into Plexiglas or something and we have to, if we have to push kids into classrooms, but-
I, I will say-
Go in the flow, whatever we do.
Yeah, there's a few things here and, and it's been, you know, with respect to, you know, to, to your comments and I, I appreciate those too. You know, this is, it's like six of one half dozen of the other. You know, we've got a circumstance where, um, you know, when we started the school year, there was a lot more flexibility in terms of how we could approach things. And we had a timetable to work with that was much more reasonable. We knew in June that in, come August or September, you know, we needed to have some plans.
Right.
Essentially, what we've been given now is basically a month to figure it out. So, um, you know, that's what we're going to do. One of the things that's, that's really difficult, and I've had to remind, you know, many people of this, myself is included, is that we have to stay to the extent that we can. We have to stay rooted in what we know that, that's fact, right? About what we know about school spread in the school district. What do we know about transmission among our kids? And things of that nature. We've, we've had a pretty good success rate overall. About, you know, if I had to put a percentage on it, you know, it was, and this is just rough, but, you know, about 5.8% or so of our school population has been impacted by COVID. So when you look across, you know, that, that's, you know, it's a sizable number of people. I mean, one is too many, right? But, and that was during the height. And so now we're starting to kind of trend down. We're starting to see things, you know, hopefully continue to move. You know, I mean, we've, we've, we've reported zero cases the last two nights. So we have to kind of stay rooted in that. While at the same time, I feel, keeping our eyes on the concern about transmission at lunches. While at the same time, keeping our, our concern about distancing classrooms. But one of the things that's really important is that people have to realize that, you know, we're gonna be given a very limited box to, to work in. And so what our task is now as administrators is to work with the teaching union to create an environment that's safe and, and doable for our faculty, staff, and our kids. And I think we've demonstrated that we've done that through this entire operation. But, but there are things, the state has a certain perspective and they're gonna have the law on their side. And we're gonna be, you know, kind of at, you know, at the mercy of that. Now, we, we just have to wait and see how it goes. I don't wanna, I don't, I personally don't wanna say too, too much more beyond that. But, but yes, I mean, all, all of the concerns are valid and we've been, this is all we've been talking about really for the last two weeks. You know, we had some ideas about what a return would look like, but as I said at the outset, you know, the, the commissioner's comments kind of really, really kind of got us spinning in a different direction right now. And so we have to get our bearings and, um, and come up with a plan. And we will, and we will. And it'll be a great plan and it'll be safe and, um, and we'll get it done. But this is tough. It's like, you know, it's like we're flying a plane that's half on fire and we have been since July, so.
And I think through this chair, I just have one other question. I think if any, before any, you know, proposals are made, I would perhaps suggest that you ask the nurses, what would it look like to contact trace this? Only because you guys have spoken many, many times about-
Yeah, Dr. Chamberlain can speak to that.
About how much time they spent, so, so whatever we do-
We've already had that conversation.
Good, excellent.
Because I knew that I needed to get them thinking about how this was gonna impact their work.
Right.
So they're already working through that. But, you know, in talking, Casey and I talking, what we know is that hopefully, what's gonna happen is more people are gonna get vaccinated and hopefully, accounts are gonna continue to go down. And what does that mean for their contact tracing? It has a very positive impact on that, right? So that may position us a little bit differently than we were, say, in, you know, early January. And, and the only other thing I wanna say is, we still don't know a lot about COVID-19. But we know a lot more now than we knew back in August about procedures and practices and things that work. And I think that understanding that we've learned along the way is going to help us face this next challenge to get everybody back in. Because we don't wanna jump in with both feet without thinking through some of these things for kids and faculty either. I mean, we are, that's what makes this so angst-ridden because we wanna do right by staff and by students. So I just feel a little bit more confident. I think the nurses feel more confident now that we've kind of weathered some of these storms, that we have some knowledge to approach this next step. So a lot of work to be done, there is no doubt.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. I just didn't wanna leave them out of the consideration, that they're the ones on the phone.
I spoke with them before vacation to just say, you need to be thinking about this because at some point, we knew it would come, right?
Yeah, I mean, and through the chair, I mean, we've been, we've been talking about loosely, well, loosely talking about a return since before the holiday. And when, when would that day be and what would that look like? And so, you know, our timeline, you know, we, that we originally had in place, we thought was, was doable, made a lot of sense. You know, so like I said, this, this, this announcement came a little bit out of left field for us. You know, I guess the best way to, I guess my final comment on it right now is it's like the scene in Apollo 13 when they're running out of oxygen and you gotta get them home. And so the guys go and they dump all the stuff on the table and they figure it out. And that's really where we are. And we're gonna figure it out and we're gonna get them home. But it's, you know, people just need to have some patience and people have to understand that we are doing our very best. And, um, and we'll get it done, and we'll get it done. And, um, and our, our teachers have been amazing and, and I anticipate we're gonna have a terrific meeting with them tomorrow. And, um, and, and we'll, we'll get some agreements in place and, and we'll, we'll get this moving forward, but.
Sounds great.
Through the chair, I just, you know, a few points. First of all, it's important to know, I was watching something that was said today. Our teachers have been in the building the majority of the time. We're not, our teachers aren't sitting at home teaching, although I don't think that, I, I do it and it's not fun either. But our teachers are in the building every single day. Well, at least 40 is a week, if not some or more. I was watching one of our sub-separate teachers dancing during music class today. So they're, they're working hard. So, I mean, our teachers are not sitting at home teaching behind a computer every day. They're in the classroom doing, doing this. And I just, I, I, it irks me when I see comments that teachers aren't working hard because it's not true. The other thing is, um, just as we're bringing these kids back, I just, and I don't think Auburn's gonna have a problem with this, but just remembering the social-emotional piece of this. I know they keep saying, you know, getting kids back in the classroom and how important it is for their social-emotional well-being. Well, these kids are gonna be still apart from each other, not- From each other, not able to touch each other, not able to see their friends in masks. Now we're talking five days a week. And, um, you know, MCAS is still on the table. Nothing we can do about that and, um. You know, I just don't want that to be forgotten. If academics go down a little bit, it stinks, but, um. I'm, I worry about anxiety, depression. I'm seeing it in, um, my third graders. So. We don't, I don't want that to happen, um, to these kids when they're in the buildings, um, more. I think it's good. I think, you know, going in the buildings. Safely with the data that's out there is great, but, um. Our teachers are working hard, but, um, and I just don't want that to be forgotten with these kids.
Great comments.
Through the chair, um, do we know where the teachers stand with vaccines? Like before they were two point three. In line or something. Is that wiped out now and they're just?
No, so through the chair, they're still, they're still in that, that same, that same posture. But it's, it's one of these things where, you know, whereas before we had, we thought we were gonna have vaccines shipped to the board of health and they were gonna come in and do. You know, something a couple of weekends similar to what they did with emergency response personnel and others. No, they're, they're, when it's their time, um, when, when they decide at the state level that it's, it's time to move to, to that next phase. They're, they're gonna need to go to any one of, you know, the, 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 the different sites, um, Walgreen, CVS, Gillette, whatever that they can get into. And they're gonna have to go through the, you know, the paces, um, like everybody else. So. It's gonna be a very disjointed type of scenario. Um, we're already kind of off in that realm already. Because we do have obviously folks, you know, in, in our teaching corps that, that, you know, do have comorbidities or. Are serving as the primary care attendant for somebody in their family or, or whatever. So, um, you know, slowly, you know, people are starting, you know, to get vaccinated, but. You know, and that's another disruption that will be, will be something that we have to, to think about and we've already discussed is. You know, if, if three teachers get a vaccination appointment on a Tuesday, you know, at Bryn Mawr and they need to go to Gillette Stadium for eleven o'clock. You know, what are you, what are you gonna do? You know, how, how is that gonna run?
And through the chair, it's also if we were able to do it here, and I guess it doesn't matter now, but. We could schedule it on a Friday so that, you know, if you're, because you're really tired after the second, most people are. So we're not gonna have that luxury. So I see our absenteeism rates going up more. Because there are gonna be teachers who, um, may not feel. Okay with teaching the next day. We don't have any ability to. You take the appointment when you can at these mass vaccination sites, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you're right. So through the chair, it's just, you know, that we've just touched on about, you know, maybe a quarter of the bases that we're trying to hit. There's just a lot. There's a lot.
Gail. If I could add something on this. I was scheduled, I'm over, over sixty-five, not over seventy-five. Not yet. Um, I was scheduled at the town hall at some point. But of course that all got canceled. But then we ended up with a phone call that people from Auburn that fit the criteria can go to Southbridge. And it's not on that big list that the state has, but it's a, a vaccination site put on by Harrington Hospital. Under the realm of Harrington Healthcare. And they take people from other communities. And we were able to go out there last Friday as we told our neighbors, they followed us out there too. And we were able to get the vaccinations. So people in Auburn that qualify. If they look at the Harrington website, they can find the information. And when we went out, we didn't even need an appointment. So that might be another site for people to look at in town that. Need it and maybe they can even get one at their own convenience. And then when you get the first one, they automatically schedule the second one. So you don't have to keep, I mean, I wasn't, I didn't wanna drive to Gillette and not retire it. I mean. It's just.
Not unless there's a football game.
Well, I was more interested in going to Rhythm to go shopping than I was to go to Gillette to a football game. But, um, I mean, that, that was twenty minutes away. And it was a very smooth operation and.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah. I mean.
And through the chair today, they did just announce now MS Jesus, they are going to. Kick them back into the community health centers and hospitals. So they flipped back again just this afternoon. So maybe they won't. Maybe we want to send Alex to just.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, who knows?
Who knows what's, what's the day, right?
You know, we were talking to somebody, um, we were talking to a staff member. Um, at the middle school and their appointment, uh, their first available was what, April ninth? March thirty-first. Yeah, it was March thirty-first. And then there was another one of their first available was April ninth. So, you know. So even when, even when, you know, that they open that tier for teachers, I mean, it's four hundred and fifty thousand, you know, of us across and it's not just teachers. It's, it's anything associated with school. So it's your bus drivers, you know, your crossing guards, everybody, you know, your school resource officers, but there are, they should be outside, but. Anybody that, that's associated and affiliated with the school district. So, you know, you know, you're, you're amplifying that number and it's just, it's a massive amount. It's a massive number and, you know.
There may be a few busy signals that, that day.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we'll see. But like I said, we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Okay, anything else on that?
Good luck.
Moving on.
Have our support.
Yes, you do.
Uh, just to follow up, um, everyone, we talked about pool testing and, and the merits of it. We've been talking about this off and on since November. As, as Dr. Chamberlain, uh, had attended a follow-up, um, a follow-up webinar. And, and it, it continues to just, it kind of, you know, confirm our belief that it, it's not. It, for a variety of reasons that we've already talked about, it, it's, it's not worth something, um, you know, for us to get involved in. The, the financial cost, the logistics, um, you know, what the cost benefit would be to us, um, right now. Zip slip is doing a, a very great job, a very good job, um, as are our nurses and our families, um, in, in policing themselves. And so, um, we are gonna be passing, um, on that. On that initiative. So I just wanted to, to put that to rest once and for all.
Anything on that?
Makes sense.
I think we were in agreement last time around.
Yeah, just wanted to close the door.
That wasn't the way to go.
Next on our agenda is, uh, our fall to spring athletic update. As you probably are aware, um, we are gonna move forward with our fall two, uh, update, or excuse me, our fault, our fall two season. In our spring athletic season, um, you know, based on, you know, metrics and where we're going, et cetera. You know, with, uh, with COVID, you know, we're comfortable that. Most of our, uh, athletics are outside with the exception of a little bit of unified basketball. That we can, uh, move into fall two and the spring safely for our kids. So I, I do have Mr. DeLongchamp here. Um, good evening, Mr. DeLongchamp. How are you?
Evening, sir. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Davis, uh, I see the B over there, so I don't know which one of you is, uh. Gonna do the show tonight, but. The floor is yours.
Fantastic. So, um, I can't see anybody, but I see my face twice on the screen and I don't know how much I enjoy that at all.
Yes, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Great. Um, so, you know, before I begin, I would like to say, um, just having the chance to sit in on this conversation. I'd like to say thank you very much, um, to all of you on the committee. The thoughtful discussion in regards to comments about homework, um, mental health, how to ease kids back. You know, I wanna reassure you all that, you know, I, I can speak on behalf of high school, right? I, I'm in regular conversations with principals. These are things that we're, we're constantly in communication with our staffs with, in conversation and reflection. And, um, you know, we are, you know, with, with the interests of trying to meet all the needs for our kids. So. The incredible challenge that's been put in front of us. I do thank our staff. Like what you've mentioned, I think our staff has done an amazing job in an incredibly challenging, challenging world. So. But I, I will send, um, and share your thoughts with them. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
So as, um, as Mr. Handfield mentioned, or Dr. Ganda mentioned, um, we're in our wedge, we're in our wedge season. That's what the MIA calls it. The wedge season was put in place, um, for those sports that were deemed, um, to be, um, at a higher risk in the fall. And then for schools who weren't ready to begin fall sports. So it was just put in place, um, to make sure kids had opportunity. So with that being said, um, it began on Monday, February twenty-second. And we've, um, Brian and I, you know, we've had a lot of conversations, um, with Dr. Handfield. Regards to just, you know, how best to roll this out. We thought, um, again, like everything else, we would take a slow approach. And we began operations with, um, some, um, football activities on Monday. And that consisted of just dating with kids, information, passing out, passing out some equipment. And, um, and then they've had the last couple of days and I can't see them today and beautiful weather outside in the fields. So they've been on the fields for the last couple of days. Unified basketball, cheer, that begins, um, next Monday, March first. In regards to when we're actually gonna start activities. Um, some of those. Tonight, and Brian can speak a little bit about this in a few minutes, um, before this meeting, um, Brian had a meeting with coaches and our parents. In regards to going over health and safety protocols and outlining, um, our schedule. Cheer will have a similar meeting on, um, on next Monday. And then, um, the last sport that we're going to in this wedge season is going to be indoor track, which will begin on March fifteenth. So, you know, slowly taking in the kids, um. Making sure that we go over all health and safety protocols, making sure that we go, we work with any of the coaches and any kind of particular training that might need to be done. Going over guidelines. It, it's important to note, um, same things that we put in base in the ball are in place right now. Clearly and at all times, masks are being worn. Players are hand, hand sanitizing out in the fields or outside, um, before and after, um, practices. All equipment is being sanitized. So it can be ready for the following day. And then clearly when we can socially distance our kids, we're socially distancing them. Whether that, whether that be a mask break or water break, um, we're making sure our kids are all facing, um, a similar direction and that they're at least six feet apart. And then we're podding them. So we can keep track of their activities. In, in the, in the case of whoever has somebody sick, we know exactly which players, um, and which students were involved. In addition, um, I, I wanted to share the numbers, um, which was exciting because, you know, I, I almost feel awful sometimes and I. I don't feel right when, when kids are actually thanking me because we're allowing them to play, play football. But we had, we had about sixty to sixty-five, um, we're still teasing the numbers out for football. When I went out to the field today, they were, they were in six, they were in six pods. And, um, they were rotating through, um, different coaches at stations. Our indoor track numbers are a bit lower than in, in normal years and that has a lot to do with the fact that. Some of our track athletes have been, well, players do, but because they're running in the same season. We're just, you know, we're just not able to get the same kind of numbers, but we roughly have about twenty to twenty-five students. And it's important to know within the track, um, our activities are gonna take place outside for indoor track. So there is no indoor track activities happening within the building. Unified basketball. We roughly have, um, twenty students and they're broken into two pods. One, and they'll practice on two days a week. Where one pod will practice like, I'm gonna make an example here, Tuesday, and another pod will practice on a Thursday. And they'll have their coaches and support, um, staff with them. And then, um, roughly at this point in time, we have, um, we have between ten and twelve students, um, that are registered, um, for cheerleading. And at this point in time, at this wedge season, um, they're gonna cheer at, um, home football games. It's not a competitive platform at this time. The MIA is reviewing information whether or not to look at potentially a competitive season in the spring. And then if that happens, we'll get that information out. Had a lot of time focusing on, you know, how to move the kids, um, through these, through the season as safe as possible. We went backwards to look at what we did in the fall because for the most part, um, we had a lot of success in the fall. And then we, we applied the appropriate updates. The MIA had sports specific rules for each one of these groups and we've, we've notified coaches, we've had coaches meetings. And then we've had parent meetings. I guess at this time I can, I can take some questions. If any of you guys have questions.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Longchamp?
I'm figuring he knows what he's doing and I have faith in him.
I think, I think, um, I think we're good, Mr. Longchamp. Um, no questions. Nice presentation. Appreciate that information.
Well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Good night. Will Mr. Davis be speaking as well?
Uh, no, I think he was just there for moral support.
He was there for moral support, yeah. All right. Thank you for the moral support, Mr. Davis.
Yeah. You never know, he may click on just to watch, but you know.
We do have pretty exciting meetings.
We do, very exciting meetings.
If he's anything like my students, he just says his name up there, but he's actually. Any attention.
The older they get, the wiser they get. They know about that, don't they?
Slightly related, um, about athletic conversation, um, APS field usage with athletics resuming outdoors. We do have, uh, requests from outside groups here in the town. You know, Auburn youth soccer is one, um, Auburn Worcester lacrosse, which is Aubrey, operated. Primarily in Auburn. Eventually it'll be Auburn Little League and Auburn Fast Pitch looking to access the fields. So I believe I need a motion, uh, from the committee, uh, because we do have field request forms from them. Uh, I also have a couple of requests from some local high schools, um, to play a game or two in our turf fields, um, during, uh, during the fall two season. So, um. I just wanted to bring that before the committee.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to open the APS athletic fields to use contingent upon the organization's completion of all relevant paperwork adhered to the school committee policies and approval from the superintendent.
I'll second that.
And I have a second, um, open to discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I, if, just as a clarify, I just, I just thought of this, I should clarify. In the southern, so in the Southern Wester County League in high school, in the high schools here and that we're a part of. Six of our high schools have turf athletic fields and six of the high schools do not. Schools are, are, are kind of adopting another school for, to assist with games. So for example, David Proudy is with Tantascua. There are other examples. Grafton was, is in Worcester, for example. Um, they're not there all the time, um, but because their fields are grass and, and essentially unplayable due to the snow and, and the wet. You know, there may be a team, you know, having a game on, on, you know, our field, um, based on some of the requests that have come in. You know, it's, it's, we decided as a league, it's, it's kind of the neighborly thing to do, given the circumstances that we're in. So. I just wanted to, um, to put that out there so that if people drove by and saw, you know, the Leicester Wolverines, you know, playing, you know, someone. That they would know what that, what that circumstance is about. You know, we've gone back, we went back and forth, um, and talked a lot about this as superintendents, you know, and we just felt that it was the neighborly thing to do. And that if we were in that circumstance, we would wish that, that they would afford us the same courtesy. So I just wanted to, uh, to also mention that as well.
That makes sense. Um, the only. I shouldn't even call it a concern. The. Okay, the only concern that I have with, with, um, all the talk of opening up fields and voting on this, and I certainly will vote in favor of it. Especially for, for our town teams. Is, I think the, I think as, as the state sort of pushes us in a direction to get back into the schools full-time. And now opening up sports once again, just because there's a. Not a slight downward trend. This is, this is a pretty nice, um, downward trend, um, going on right now and that, that we're enjoying. But, but what I don't want, and I think it's, I think, I think it's what Meg mentioned earlier was, you know, people. Students getting back into the schools and just thinking, okay, it's, it's open season now. We can, we can do as we please. And I know that we have. We have a leadership, um, team in place that's not going to allow that. And we have teachers in place that are not going to allow that. But when we start to open up all the fields, and again, I'm not against it in any way, these kids need to get out. On the field as much as they need to get back into the buildings. But I just don't want that to come on. I, I just want the, all the leagues involved to understand that. We still need to keep close tabs on these, on these youngsters because they're gonna get this feeling like everything's completely back to normal. Look, this, this field's occupied over here. This one's occupied over here. Um, now we're gonna open up Pappas. Everyone's back to normal again. And that, and what's gonna follow that is, um, less hand washing, um, less mask wearing. You know, when groups of them are on their way on and off the field. And that's nothing that we can control from a town league standpoint, but I'm just putting that out there. I'm just hoping that, you know, people will be. Careful and assuming the responsibility as, you know, as a youth coach, as, um, the director. responsibility as, you know, as a youth coach, as, um, the directors of the youth leagues, that we don't just jump right back in, um, both, both feet right into the, the cold water and, uh, and you know, everything's back to normal, because it's going to give off that impression once everything opens up. It's kind of what we talked about when we closed down the fields, um, earlier, um, well, I shouldn't say earlier, this year, last year when we closed down the fields, it was because we didn't want to give off that impression that everything was fine, when on the other hand, we were telling everyone, keep to yourself, stay home, keep your distance, and keep your, and keep your masks on, so that's, I'm, I'm not concerned with, with our teachers and I'm, I'm not even concerned with the majority of our leagues, coaches, and directors. Um, but I just think that, that message needs to be clear, um, as overseers, caretakers of the fields, that message needs to be clear from us to all the leagues involved, and I, I don't have to tell you that, but, um, I know that you're on the same page, but I'm just making it known from a school committee standpoint.
And through the chair, thank you, and I, and I couldn't agree with you more, uh, on that. Uh, what I, so we all, so you, um, precautions are still in effect for all youth league sports, that hasn't changed, is what the state's guidance has been on that, is, that hasn't changed. One of the things that we will be doing, um, is adding, uh, a piece to our field usage forms that outlines explicitly what the understanding is around the adherence to those rules and regulations, um, and, you know, they, they are expected to be followed. And, um, you know, in situations where there will be site, you know, managers present on behalf of the school districts, you know, that's what they will be looking to do. Um, and certainly, um, myself and, and Mr. Fahey and others that, that tend to kind of buzz through and spot check things on the weekends, because that's, we have nothing else to do. Um, you know, we'll be looking for that as well. Um, you know, we want to, we, we want to do this appropriately, but we want to do it right, and we want to do it in, in a controlled fashion, and we want to make sure that this doesn't detract or in any way, um, you know, uh, force, you know, kind of a, a backwards step, you know, in what we're trying to do here, so, um, so yeah, so I appreciate you saying that, uh, and, and we are taking that very seriously.
Question and a follow-up on that. If we find one of these organizations not following our rules, do we have a right to take back our permission to use the field?
Yes.
I mean, do they understand that they just can't?
Yes. Yes, through the chair, the answer's yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
And through the chair, I'm sure we have signage already. Um, can we make sure the spectators also have signage so they know to keep masks on as well?
Sure, um, that, that's, that's no problem either. Um, it's interesting because in some, some, some guidance, spectators, you know, like at high school level, you know, um, spectators are either not allowed or, or it's only one parent, like in the fall, it was a parent was allowed to be on there and we had to count who was there and make sure that they were masked and spaced and things like that. So that will continue, um, but in, in some of, you know, some of the, um, you know, some of the other, you know, kind of youth leagues and things like that, it, it's not, you know, as strict as that, so, um, but we certainly can work on the signage and, and make sure that that's there, and again, that'll be added to, you know, to field use policies and, um, you know, so they, they will acknowledge that they have, you know, read and received it, but it shouldn't be a surprise to any of them because it's what they were doing, you know, to start the fall.
Okay, with, with all of that negativity that I just threw out there, I am super excited, um, that, that our kids are getting back out on the fields, both from a, um, town league standpoint and, um, varsity and junior varsity and, and, you know, at, at all levels of, of our schools, I am excited about that. And, um, you know, I have seen some comments out there, uh, on social media, why all of the sudden, you know, I wish, you know, my, my, my son or daughter could have played, you know, a couple of months ago when, when we had to cancel, or actually it was, I guess it's cancellation, not a postponement of, of hockey and basketball. Well, and, you know, the comments or the question, well, what's the difference? Clearly, right now, clearly, there's, there's a difference. The numbers are trending downward, um, actually, I think, I think in a way that we never thought could happen in such a short amount of time. Obviously, the state, the department, um, Department of Ed pushing students back into school, um, okaying sports, um, but if you just watch, some of the numbers have actually been, been cut in half, I was looking at some of the statistics last night, so for those who wonder, you know, why, again, it killed us to cancel that season, um, back when that happened, we didn't want to see anyone miss their, never mind their, um, their senior season, we don't want to see anyone miss any season dur, during their high school career, or even, even middle school for that matter. We don't want to see our students miss out on anything, educationally, athletically, um, whether it's, um, the arts, you name it, we, we do not want to see our students miss out on anything, but, but the numbers are down and, and, and I think it's clear, if you watch the news, um, you know, read the newspaper, check some of the data, it's just, it's, we, we've gone in such a positive direction and I don't, and as I said, you know, I throw those cautions out a few minutes ago, we're, we're not home free by any means, but there's been a significant change and a, a change for the better, so for those who ask that question, you know, just look up the data.
And those were indoor sports primarily.
Right, I was just going to say that.
Yeah.
As opposed to outdoor sports that are.
Well, that, that was obviously another concern. I was, at, at, at that time, I was watching some of the NBA preseason when we canceled that, and I was wondering what they were doing to protect one another when their faces were almost touching one another, um, when, when guarding the, the opposing player, so yeah, there were, there were concerns across the board, but we're in a good place and, and if anyone needs to, um, ask that question, just check the data.
And through the chair, you know, again, it's, and I agree with everything that you've said and, and, you know, I'm not going to obviously rehash, you know, a, a decision we made months ago, but, you know, I will say, um, you know, again, that, you know, the decisions that we make are always based first and foremost in the safety of our kids. Um, and, and whether or not people think we should be making those decisions or not, uh, you know, I guess that's, we can debate that till the cows come home, so to speak, but, um, you know, as a school, um, and, and as a school district, um, we're going to do always what, what I think, we're always going to do what we feel is going to keep our kids safe, and if parents have different prerogatives, you know, um, then that's entirely, they're right as a parent to do that, but, um, you know, I, I, how many times have I said to, to you, Dr. Chamberlain? I've second-guessed myself on the winter sports discussion, uh, indecision, um, twenty-five times, and I even said it again last week. It, you know, but I, I, I keep coming back to the fact that whether or not people like it or don't like it, and clearly there are some that don't like it still, um, you, you can never, um, I just, you can never, you can never, um, second-guess yourself when you're acting on, on behalf of the safety of kids and, and, uh, given the circumstances of that time and the fact that COVID was, was flaming and flaring all over the place, um, you know, it, we made a decision and, and, you know, that's unfortunately what, you know, what we get assigned to do in these jobs, so.
And the evidence is in lack of calamity as opposed to a flare-up, which is harder for people to see.
Correct.
We didn't have a major outbreak.
Correct, I mean, there's so many, there's so many elements that go into these things, um, and I appreciate, you know, the, the, I appreciate people's, uh, point of view, and I get it, I mean, if I, I, I get it, I mean, I, I exhibited some of those same, you know, comments, you know, when, when my daughter's softball season was canceled last year, you know, and, and even through her fall season, and even this year, she's going to have a season, but there's no spectators allowed. So I get it, I get it from that standpoint too, um, but, you know, we're, we're, we're moving on and, and, you know, hopefully that's behind us and, and we're moving on to, uh, you know, to, to fall two into spring and, um, hopefully to better days, so.
Well, let's, I, I think you, I think you, um, put that very eloquently as usual, um, better than, than I do, but the point is that is something that we can all hang our hats on, we, we don't do this to, to win any sort of popularity contest, we're, we're sitting here and we're make, helping to make these decisions, um, for, for our students, for our children, we're advocating for them, that's why we're here. So, um, again, we, we don't do it to be popular, sometimes it's not fun, um, but our heart is in the right place, our, our hearts are in the right place, I should say. Anything else on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, thank you. And we now move on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple of quick things here before we move on to teaching and learning report. Um, there've been some, some inquiries about the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar. Uh, we're still working through, um, what that will exactly look like, we want to obviously get feedback, um, uh, from, from the teaching staff, uh, in terms of what some of the, the days in, in the calendar are going to look like in terms of professional development and things of that nature. But, uh, people can, can pretty much, um, I shouldn't say pretty much, people can, can rest assured that the approximate start date of school will remain the same, um, the, the current vacations and traditional breaks will also remain the same. Um, we're just monkeying around a little bit with, um, what the professional development days will look like, and we're looking at, there's been some concerns raised about the number of half-days in the calendar, so we're taking a hard look at that as well, um, to see if, if, you know, there's, there's other ways to, to do some things, but we anticipate that we'll have, um, we'll have a calendar for you to, to, uh, look at and if not approve, certainly comment on, um, and then, you know, we can take it up a little bit later mid-March, but I think for the most part, what people are really concerned about is are there vacations next year so they can plan vacations and is school starting, you know, on time, and the answer's yes, so, um, at least that's the plan. So I just wanted to put that out there for everybody.
Sounds good.
Uh, moving on to just a budget update, um, as you've probably seen if you've been following the, the budget, um, the governor's House One numbers have come out, um, you know, kind of a surprise, but I put in parentheses, not really. Um, we, uh, we received, you know, kind of a level funded budget, back in October, we talked about, um, potential, um, deficits, if you will, um, or, or not realizing as much chapter seventy money as we might, uh, based on a downward trend in our enrollment, and in fact, um, that's, that's what we saw here from the governor in the first round of the budget. Um, our chapter seventy grew about seventy-eight thousand dollars, um, over last year, which is a sharp, uh, decrease from what we were expecting, but we're also ninety students down in the district this year. Um, and that's not something unique to Auburn, the entire state's down roughly around three percent every district, um, and so when you look at the chapter seventy increases across the majority of school districts, most are seeing, you know, very, very incremental increases in chapter seventy. So, um, it still has to wind its way, the governor's budget still has to wind its way through House and Means in both the House and the Senate, and, um, and we'll see what comes back. On a conference call that Dr. Chamberlain and I were on today with the commissioner, um, about school-related issues, the budget also came up, and, um, there is discussion, you know, about looking at that chapter seventy number and whether or not there'll be any sort of additional financial assistance for districts, maybe not the full complement of what they would have seen had their enrollment not dipped so much, but, um, you know, we'll continue to, um, to monitor that and see what happens, it's, there's still a long way to go in that budget discussion. On a positive, uh, note, however, Monday night, the select board voted to send, um, our draft budget, um, uh, to the Fin, uh, FinCom Financial Committee, so I'm waiting on a date in mid-March to, uh, present our budget to, um, to the finance committee, but, uh, select board sent it across, and we're very complimentary, um, you know, of, of the budget, and, um, so that's good news, so at least, you know, we're, we're rowing in the right direction here in the town and, um, you know, anticipate that that will continue to be the case as we, you know, move towards May, uh, town meeting.
Is that all you have under budget?
That, um, yes, Mr. Chair, that is, that is it.
Any questions or comments?
Through the chair, it's really just about whether or not you feel we have enough buffer in the budget, and I know we had a lean budget, so that's all, well, only reason I'm raising it, because there's certainly a chance that we could see an influx back of those ninety children into our district, so I guess, is there a way to quantify what, what the gap is?
So, if, um, so if there was, yeah, so that's a great question, so essentially, those, those ninety students, if they were, if they were in the district, um, we probably would have seen a chapter seventy number just shy of three hundred thousand.
Wow.
More than likely, you know, I mean, those kids are going to come back, right?
Right.
Um, the, the state made a decision to go in this direction in October, we were told something slightly different, um, that they were going to hold communities harmless, um, and use FY twenty numbers, that didn't happen. Um, so, uh, you know, speaking with town administration about this, um, what is helping us right now in terms of the buffer that you're asking about is the, the, the SR two monies that are coming from Washington. Um, we have, um, six hundred thousand dollars coming to us from the federal government and stimulus to be used over the next two fiscal years, so we're looking at it as like three hundred thousand and three hundred thousand, and so those monies will, will help kind of, you know, offset, you know, what that, you know, the, the, where we're, where we're considering to be short, um, that money.
Is that earmarked?
Um, yes.
Are those money, but you've.
Well, it's earmarked.
In a very specific way?
Well, no, no, it's not.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
No, it's, it's actually got a much wider berth to it than the SR one money.
Okay.
Um, so we're going to be able to use that money to do some things in the budget that will, you kind of take care of the shortfall, and what we anticipate, um, is that in, when we get ready, you know, so we'll have that money for twenty-two, for twenty-three, and then we anticipate next year that these kids will be back, and when we're sitting here a year from now, that we anticipate that that chapter seventy number will increase dramatically because these, these kids more than likely will come back. Um, so we're okay, we're okay, um, you know, we do have, um, you know, the, the resources available to us, uh, because that was a concern when we were talking about the utilization of that, that SR two money, um, you know, it, it's what I consider soft money, you know, it's not money that you can bank on every single year, so as we were looking at it and we're talking about how we're going to use it in the district, then it became, well, uh-oh, what happens in fiscal year twenty-four, right, when there's nothing there? And what we're, what we're, what we're suspecting is that our chapter seventy money will, will be there, um, maybe in twenty-three, um, but we suspect it'll definitely be there in twenty-four, so it'll offset, you know, so, so right now we have a patch, um, going, you know, if you will, through Washington, and, um, yeah, we'll be okay. And, and I have to say, and I do have to be complimentary too of the town administration because that was their question as well, when we were talking about, you know, budget during our review with them, they wanted to make sure that there was enough there for what we needed, so, um, so what I said to them was, you know, if there's, if something comes up that's an emergent need, um, we'll, we'll figure it out, we, we, we did a lot of that in early July, um, so, so yeah, so we're okay, we're okay.
Okay, thank you.
We really can't afford to go lower than the two-eight-nine, uh, that we put forward, um, and again, you know, that two-eight-nine is really not a true two-eight-nine, it's really a point nine-nine increase over what was appropriated in town meeting last June, that two-eight-nine is really an increase over the downturn, um, that was adopted in October of, of, um, last year, but, um, but no, we're, we're okay, we're okay.
Good.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, we now move on to teaching and learning, Dr. Chamberlain.
Thank you very much, nice to see you. So, in thinking about, we've talked a lot tonight about what's happening now, and there's a lot happening now, um, but when we think about what's happening in classrooms, you know, many students have continued to excel and done quite well, um, we continue to, you know, complete our own formative assessments to make sure that we know what students know and what they don't know, um, but as we look forward, we recognize that as time goes on, we may have students with some significant learning gaps, um, that we're going to need to kind of help them fill. So, Mrs. Reedie and I, the director of, uh, pupil services, we surveyed our reading specialists and our special education teachers, um, you know, they are the ones on the front lines to make sure that they have the tools that they need as we move forward to really fill in those gaps with kids, whether that is this school year or that falls into this summer, because I believe this summer, we're probably going to need a very robust summer program, um, and that's not going to be the end of it either, we're going to continue into next year, but we really wanted to take a good look at the tools that we have. So they've completed a survey, we've got some research on some programming, um, and we're moving forward to kind of formulate an action plan, we need to meet with all of them and kind of talk that through with how we're going to, uh, roll out some of these tools, and some of it was about, um, making sure we knew what training they all had, right? So for instance, Wilson Reading is a very well-regarded program for filling, uh, reading gaps with students that have significant reading gaps, um, and we have some folks that are already trained, so that's going to serve us well when we roll that out appropriately, so more information to come on that, but I just wanted you all to know that we're really looking forward, um, not only for the academics, for, but for our social emotional needs as well. So this, these intervention tools are around academics, um, but I'm also working with our guidance staff around making sure that we have screeners and tools available as we move forward to meet what, um, I suspect is going to be some pretty significant needs around social and emotional well-being. So that's another kind of tool that we have working, our guidance staff has, they're extremely knowledgeable, we have been the beneficiaries of many resources, whether it's through the Department of Ed or, uh, Self Remasse or those kind of places that have lots of those resources, but it's pulling it all together and having a. But it's pulling it all together and having a cohesive plan to identify kids with needs and then to provide the right intervention. So that's working as well as we already look forward, not only just to this year, but into next year. So does anyone have any questions about any of that?
Actually, I just have a question about the social and emotional piece, which you might not have an answer to. But I, I think one of the most consistent things that I've heard from a lot of parents is that they did not realize how stressed their children were in school just because of their rigor of, this is pre-COVID, that once, you know, you know, they went through an adjustment period of being home, but once they wound down, they thought their kids were able to get more acclimated with the material because they had time. They just had time to sit. They weren't racing to this class, this class, that, all this stuff. So I'm concerned that when we, you know, look at even, even just getting them back in the spring, much less in the fall, that the pace might become overwhelming again, you know, like throwing them back in. So, and I don't know if that fits more into our scheduling piece or in the social-emotional as well, but I'm not sure if it's an anxiety-focused component of emotional. Meg could probably be much more articulate about this than, than I, but.
Yeah, there's definitely an anxiety. I mean, I sat through our fifth session of the parenting program that our school, our social workers, along with our BCBA and Kimpusiak, and it was all about anxiety today and how kids demonstrate anxiety, where it's more of they might get really rambunctious, or they might get really, you know, they have a stomach ache, or all of, like a whole litany of things, the way kids demonstrate anxiety versus how an, an adult might show their anxiety. But that's part of the reason for meeting with guidance, because we do have to have a plan. How do we screen? And it's also, it is around scheduling, but it's also about keeping the, you know, the one thing, the one thing. And I think, looking back, when we first began this, that's all we talked about, was we had to go into this. We had to keep kids in school, but we had to think about their social and emotional well-being. And I think that's our job to keep that on the front burner for our leadership team, for our guidance teams, and for our teachers, not only for the kids' well-being, but for their own well-being, right? So that, that's just a song we have to keep singing, and we have to, we have to be the ones that push that forward. But along with that is working with the people that really have the tools because it's sometimes really hard to identify that a child is really, really anxious, right? So we have to look at some screeners. We have to identify that because, you know, those kids, they're very anxious, but they're not going to say it. They're going to put their head down and get done what they need to get done, and they're going to keep it all inside, right? So we have to be really willing and able to dig into that a little bit. And we have some tools available to us. I've sat through some wonderful trainings, as have our guidance staff. Now it's pulling it together into a plan as we move forward to make sure that we're watching out for those kind of signs and we're creating a school environment that keeps that in the forefront, right? What are we doing to kids as they go through their day?
Right. And I think that's excellent to hear because I think we might have a lot more kids coming back in that normally we're just go with the flow kind of kids, that all of a sudden when we've got the hectic pace back, you know, folded in, that it's almost like preemptively needs to.
Yeah, no, and I, through the chair, I, I, we couldn't agree more with you. And, and so that's, that's another base, if we go back to what we were talking about with the return to school. That's another base that we have to touch that, you know, we, we originally, prior to yesterday's discussion, Dr. Chamberlain and I were, were speaking about, you know, in a very similar way that we entered school, which is kind of a very phased-in approach. We have to take that, that, we have to take that same approach returning now, even I think maybe more so than we did, you know, in the fall. And so we have to figure out how to do that. We have to figure out how to get our kids back in, get them acclimated, you know, and then start identifying, you know, and not that we're not doing it now, because we are seeing the majority of them now, but starting to identify, you know, what you're saying, you know, and, and trying to figure out, you know, we have these parallel tracks running. How do we make them all run in sync, right? We've got, you know, these, these requirements academically and, you know, MCAS, et cetera. But meanwhile, we've got these kids that, you know, they're not, there's, they're not there, you know, it's not running in sync. And so for all of them, it's not running in sync. And so we have to tease out how that happens and what that's going to look like in schools. And so to, to Dr. McCrillis's point earlier, too, about, you know, academics and achievement and things like that, yeah, I mean, I, I think you're going to be hard-pressed to see a lot of districts, you know, I think, I think kids are resilient, and I think you're going to see that bear itself out. We're seeing that bear itself out in their benchmark, you know, assessments that, you know, that they're still making really good progress, the majority. But there is a cadre and there's a dip in, in some students. And, and, you know, how do we best do that? And so standing up, you know, a, a robust summer option, continuing to provide options as we move into next school year for families to access, you know, and, and we work with them to get their children to where they need to be. Yeah, it's not easy, and, and this is another part of, there's no playbook for this type of stuff, you know? You know, so, yeah, but no, I mean, points well taken.
Through the chair, I also think, you know, I, I love guidance and everything, but if the guidance is only seeing the kids once a week, you know, really training some of the teachers on social-emotional and maybe some growth and development in some of the classes would be really beneficial. Or even screening the teachers to see which ones are a little bit better at that versus others might, might help.
Yeah, and that's something that they've been, that, those are conversations they've been having throughout the school year with guidance, with the teaching staff around those kind of things. And to kind of, this kind of leads into something that I'm going to talk about at the end a little bit. But, you know, the other thing is, kids are going to have concerns around their schoolwork, right? Anxiety and things. You know, some of the things we have to talk about is, they're going to have anxiety, potentially, just being now in a room with 25 people.
Right, exactly.
I mean, I don't know about you, but sometimes I watch old movies and I see people at a concert with 50,000 people on top, and it, like, I, I can't believe we used to do that, you know?
Through my second grader already said that once. He's like, I'd be a little scared to be with so many kids.
Yeah, you know, so.
And that's what I'm getting at.
I mean, we have to start at that point.
That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is what I'm saying, it was quite articulating, but I think, you know, there's this other, before we even get to the schoolwork.
Exactly.
You know?
Yeah.
We don't know where they're coming in from, so.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I know even now when things change, like our principals and our teachers are like, well, they need to practice that, right? So like, they've trained us now. We need to practice things before we, so, so when this all happens, right, the kids are going to have to have opportunities to practice. How do they go through a hallway? How do they come into the classroom? And we did a lot of that at the beginning when we were going into this hybrid model, and we're going to have to do it again. Those very, very basic things. Then once some of you get some of those things in place, the anxiety goes down a little bit, right? And then you take the next step. So now, what is my schoolwork going to look like and how am I going to navigate that? Same kind of thing. So there's going to have to be, and that's why we talked about, this is not just, let's bring them back. It has, it's, it's so far from that, right?
Yeah.
It, it doesn't, there's nothing about snapping our fingers to get kids back in, and we recognize that. So there'll be a lot of attention paid to that. Just to jump past the literacy guide, but that Mass Partnership for Youth that we joined this year for professional development, we can have five in-service sessions. And speaking with the principals and guidance, you know, it, it kind of reflects what you're all looking for and what we're going to focus on, where we're looking to get something in about creating an anti-racist classroom, cultural proficiency, trauma-sensitive classrooms, and how anxiety can impact school performance, and mindfulness in the age of digital distraction. And that, but the one on mindfulness really is geared more for the staff, but there's also a component with how they can bring that to their kids. So I think everybody's thinking that, right? No one was looking for something around academics, really, right? They were all looking at those things that can help make kids feel safe. And I think if we can help make kids and staff feel safe with this transition, things will be okay, right? It'll take time, but they'll be okay. But we have to keep safety and all of that on the forefront of our work.
I'm just, through the chair, are you thinking in long-term, like September, or in the month that?
In the month.
So like, everything has to be expedited, essentially?
Yeah.
I, my kids don't even know yet about the new plan, and I just know, especially my little one, it's going to cause a lot of anxiety, just, you know, going back on people being close and keeping a mask on five days a week, all day long, stuff like that. So, yeah, I just want to, that's all I wanted to hear, was that we're thinking in a month, we're going to attack all of these issues and get our staff up to speed with social-emotional needs and stuff.
Yeah, and they've been, you know, that's been, we've been talking about that all year, right? We really have been. But we're going to have to kind of take that step back, like we're going back to the beginning because it's new, right? But we did that in the fall, right? And teachers spent time in that, and we just have to do that all again. We're going to have to.
Yeah.
Because if we try and push through it, no one's going to be successful.
No.
And, you know, we're talking about the kids having some angst about coming back in this new setting, but our staff is going to have that, too. So they need that time to acclimate to that. It's, it's a big shift.
Yeah, my eighth grader did mention they moved around to different classes last week and this week. So I was kind of impressed by that, because I'm like, well, good, we're starting to, you know, lay the groundwork for.
Yeah, and through the chair, again, as, as I had said, you know, at the outset, you know, we've, we've been planning for a transition, and that's a part of it, is so at the middle school that they, you know, they were having the teachers travel to the kids as part of their plan. And so, you know, they decided, you know, as we were talking with them, that Mr. Desto and others, that, you know, and the teachers were comfortable, it was time to start making some shifts and some changes. And so now the kids are up and they're moving and doing some things, and, yeah.
She liked that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet.
She liked being able to move.
I mean, lots of rules about it.
Yeah.
Right? Lots of practice, like they literally had to practice how to do it and what the expectation was and where teachers were going to be to, to monitor everything. So there's a lot of thinking that goes into that, you know, just to move from one room to another. And we're just going to have to go through all that.
And I asked her if she felt safe, and she said yes. So they are, you know, teaching them to do it in a safe way.
But even as I'm sitting here, and Maddie told us the same thing, but now I'm, I'm thinking, you know, Rebecca, are they sanitizing the desks in between, you know, and are the kids doing that? So maybe it's, it might help to tell the parents what's it going on to. And I'm just realizing that we didn't.
Yeah, we can look into that for sure, yeah. And there'll be a lot more communication related to that. And just to jump back a little bit, so the Mass Youth Partnership, just to let you know that we're focused on those things that are important to all of you, too. But Desi did come up with a literacy guide that while they kind of put together all this information and then said, here you go, as we begin to explore it a bit, we're finding that there are some resources there that through this, this, looking at our tier, students who need Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, that there are some really good options for us. So some of our reading specialists are exploring that a little bit so we can bring in the best of the best. And I will say, they took a lot of time to put it together. They didn't do the greatest rollout, but it's very well organized, so to navigate it on your own and to see what's there, I think it's really going to help us on those components of reading for kids who really need that support. So I appreciate the effort that staff is taking to kind of look through that, and, and I know in the long term, it's going to help us to really help the kids who need that most. So a lot of good things happening. I'm just going to giddy up.
Yeah. Well, I think you're being proactive, honestly. I mean, you know, so as much as we can be, considering the shifting dynamics every day, so.
Yeah, and on another good note, I had mentioned some time ago about the high school seniors who are going to be able to work in our buildings. As with everything, it slogs along, but I got the good news today that we are ready to go. So now they have to complete their employment packets and all of that. But we do have 10 seniors who will be in Bryn Mawr, Packerchog, the, the Middle School or Swanson Road, and we think they may be able to be in there for a couple hours a day.
That's great.
You know, and they have to be seniors in good academic standing and all of that and interested in education, but that's going to be a big add, I think, for our school. So that was really good news, that it finally kind of has all come together, that we can make it happen.
That's great. And so the teachers are happy as well.
They're thrilled. And I honestly, I was getting a little anxious, but now, when I look at what they're giving us for money, they can probably do about 10 weeks of that at 10 hours a week. So another week, and now we're going to have a lot more kids sooner than later, so it's going to be pretty good timing.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now for that big sigh of relief, business and financial.
So good evening, everyone, again. In your packet, I had a year-to-date budget report for you. It was dated February 22nd. And along with that, I have a short list of transfers, the, most of them being between series, and one being in two different series. And I'm looking for your approval on those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on the budget report if you have any.
I would entstone that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented.
Do I second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you. And the bus application for 21-22 school year has been shared with families via one-call emails and will be, will continue to be throughout the year. Hard copies will be sent home with the try to report cards at the end of March. We also have the application on the website for people to download. And again, we have the, they can send it via mail, they can pay online. We also have the mailbox out front that they can deposit or drop off the registration with payment, or we even have the doorbell now that if they've dropped something off and they have a question, we can respond to them. So hopefully, we, we've gotten some in, but not many yet, but I'm, you know, the year's young, so. But, and that will be my report. The only thing I just want to reiterate, as Dr. Hanfield said, we're in good shape moving forward to next year. We're also doing very well this year, and we're monitoring things and keeping an eye on things, and we feel that we're doing well and we're in good shape, so.
Excellent.
I just wanted to reiterate that.
Nice to hear good news.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. And anything before we head into executive sec, executive session, easy for you to say, Dr. Hanfield?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
That's it, okay. I would entstone a motion to go into executive session.
I will make that motion that we go into executive session for Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, namely business assistance and technical support.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Rule call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallaway?
Yes.
Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Scottman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. It is a vote. Good night, everyone.[1786.54][1786.54][music]